Time has come for a public council meeting tomorrow for 20th November 26, 2018. Bide allegiance to the flag.
Bide allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the councilors, to the guests, I hope everybody had a tremendous Thanksgiving today. Hope you didn't overeat and hope you all had an enjoyable holiday weekend as well. And it was great to see such a tremendous turnout at the Holiday Gray. Am I okay?
It's a matter of opinion.
That's what the doctor said.
It's all right.
Right, thanks. Okay, with that being said, Mr. Clerk, we're ready for item number one.
We accept the minutes of November 13, 2018, City Council meeting.
Accept and placed on file.
We have the hearings, a petition of Eddie Awan, DBA, A1 Restorations for Motor Vehicle Mechanical Repair License located at 287 North Montello Street, Unit 1, in City Clerk's Office, October 31, 2018. Hearing is signed for November 26, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. All necessary paperwork is on file, and the Brockton Fire Department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. If there's anybody here to speak in favor of, please come up to the microphone and state your name to the clerk.
Hello, my name is Eddie Awan. I reside in Brockton. I have a few companies in Brockton, and I'm looking for three repair licenses on or at 287 North Montello Street in Brockton.
Okay, so the first one we're working at is Unit Number One of that address. Anyone that -- okay, that's all you have to say at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else here in favor, wishes to be heard, please come forward and speak your name to the clerk. Seeing none, I guess we'll clear that part of the hearing close. Anybody here in opposition? Anybody here in opposition? Seeing none, I declare that part of the hearing close. Counselor Ellery, I believe this is in your area, is this correct?
It is.
Okay. Anything you want to say?
This is just a transfer, right, from your -- oh, this is the new license of the existing property?
Yes. Exactly.
As long as it, you know, follows the same stipulations as the license is already there that it shares the building with, because you do have one or two bays that are already licensed, right?
Yes, three of them.
Yep, three of them.
Okay.
As long as it, you know, shares the stipulations with those, I have no objection.
Councillors have any other questions or concerns? Counselor Fowle.
Just a question to our legal counsel, if I could, because I think this issue came up before. Multiple licenses to a single individual, I thought, if my memory serves, was not consistent with the law, that you could have three separate individuals, shall we say, or corporations or entities apply, providing it was consistent with the ordinance, but not one individual holding all three licenses, basically for speculation, to transfer them to someone. So could you enlighten us, or?
So the last time these came up, the amendments that we did on transferability hadn't yet passed, so that's why I advised for them to either be tabled, and I don't remember if there was a no-action vote. But because this is a location that has -- and they're empty, right? There wasn't -- your other tenants that were there prior have been evicted for whatever reasons?
In the -- no, one of them has. One was evicted. I should say, two of them were evicted. One was there, but not holding a repair license.
So these could issue to him, and they could be transferable, but they'd have to be upon reapplication to the City Council, because they'd be considered a transfer license within the same garage, and it'd be transferring from one to another. So that is a risk in case these licenses are ever transferred.
I'm sorry, I missed the last.
Better than?
Was your question whether or not these licenses can be transferred?
No. My question was, can a single person have three separate licenses on the same piece of property, and does that comport now with our ordinance as it's written?
We don't have restrictions as to how many licenses per location, because of these instances, that some of these shops have separate bays that are being leased, not necessarily the buildings being leased, but the bay areas being leased.
Okay.
Point of information, Mr. President.
When I brought this exact same question up when we were at the Little Theater, and what we were told at that time is, even though it's in the name of the individual, it's the DBA that's the triggering point, doing business as. So even though there are three licensing's being issued in the name of Mr. Awan, they're for three different entities, even though they're not legal -- well, they're legal entities with the City of Brockton, because you have to pay for the DBA certificate.
Right.
That's what we were told when I asked the same question.
So it basically comes down to, do we want three more repair licenses in the city, then? Everything else is perfectly legal? It becomes a political or philosophical question rather than a legal question?
Correct.
Okay.
But you do -- so if he gets the license, there are transferable, the amendments that you added, so I'm saying is that, let's say, I'm not using you right here, but let's say that they were just being a straw man type thing. These are the situations where he could apply for a license and then lease it to another business. But in order to do that, they'd have to come seek approval for that transfer. So you'd be able to, if you're worried that something like that may come up, you'd be worried to take action on it, on the transfer application.
All right, so would he need three separate insurance policies, three separate whatever legal documents that are required of these, workers' comp if there's going to be repair work done, or?
If those are your conditions, then you can put them in for stipulations, but that's not what your ordinance says.
Okay. Do we have any stipulations, or any hours of the day, days of the week?
Excuse me, the stipulations would have to come from the counselor, if he's worked it out with the gentleman, I would think.
There are stipulations on the businesses already in operation at that location, so I'm just, you know, of the mind to keep those, you know, continue. I don't have them off the top of my head, but, you know, they already are, you know, in effect.
And it could be I've missed something, because I was a little under the weather, but did we -- I don't know how many vehicles are going to be stored there, I don't know how many parking places there are, I don't know any of that. I don't know whether all three are going to operate at the same days of the week or hours of the day, and, you know, we got somewhat chastised by the police department for not spelling out very clearly what we want. So that's the only reason I'm raising these issues, as I would with any license.
If I can -- one of the things he's suggesting is that it be consistent, so I think that that was one of the concerns of the department previously, was that with these bay situations, you would have half the bay being able to operate till 4:00 p.m., and maybe the other half could operate till 6:00 p.m. So at least in this instance, he's suggesting that they have the same hours of operations. So perhaps that aspect of what the officers were concerned about is mitigated a little.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would probably, at this point, I mean, if we're interested in knowing that, then I mean, we can just place these to the end of the meeting, and you can sit with Mr. Anawan and find out just, you know, what those stipulations are that are on the other, you know, businesses that are located there, and then we can just come back to it, so there'd be some answers to those questions. Counselor Rodriguez, or?
Mr. Chairman, I -- Mr. President, I actually have a little bit of a concern when we're looking at one individual getting three licenses. So anytime a citizen of this city feels like coming in front of this body to request a license, I know this time is three, but can it be five, six, seven, whatever the number might be, just because I have the base to do it. I don't quite understand why we wouldn't just provide the individual with one license and operate in multiple bays if need be under one entity. I have a real problem with providing three licenses, and for that reason, until we get this clarified, if I could, I'd like to refer this item to our Subcommittee on Public Safety to really vet this stuff out, because I do have some concerns with this.
Okay, counsel. Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, I just echo the sentiments of Mr. Rodriguez. I don't remember when we stopped sending it to public safety. I know there was a practice last year, another legislative session, we were doing that, the applicant would come before us, I sat there, and a lot of you did, and they would bring the parking parameters and show us the spaces, and I don't know why we stopped doing that. Number one, number two, to the ward counselor, if you're keeping the same stips relative to two, would you keep the stip for the one? He said there was a third one that wasn't operational, right? So you have to, you can't just say you're attaching the stips, because there weren't any stips on that third one.
Counselor Lally, go ahead.
The, as far as I'm aware, as far as I remember, there were three that already have licenses. What he's referring to is the three that he's looking for licenses on now, one of them was not an operational business beforehand. It was just a place where cars were left.
Like, there probably wouldn't have been stips on that, because it wouldn't have been the same type of business.
That's one of these three.
Okay.
None of them have those, yeah.
I mean, I share the same sentiments as Counselor Rodriguez. I mean, we were sending it to public safety, and all of a sudden, we're not, and I think we need to, because there's a lot of confusion.
That is true.
Exactly.
Ken, I think part of the reason, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
One of the reasons why I think it hasn't recently gone to public safety is because we had the ban on licenses, so if they came before us, it was easy to just reject. But because we have the new amendments, applicants are now eligible to apply, so that's likely why you haven't seen any of these go to public safety, as because before, they were just advised to deny, because you weren't allowing any new licenses.
Thank you, Attorney Resnick.
Why don't -- somebody want to make a motion pertaining to -- did you make it?
Yes.
Motion to send them to public safety?
Second.
Second, on the motion, Counselor Borghardt.
No, I just wanted to support the motion, yeah.
Okay, all right. So we'll send them to public safety, and then Chairman, you know, the Chairman, Counselor Fowle, you're the Chairman of Public Safety?
Yeah.
So would probably, hopefully, you can do something the month of December before we get into January.
Yes, absolutely. We'll coordinate with Attorney Resnick.
Okay, so motion was made and seconded on the motion, Counselor Azak.
President, just a point of information, and I believe I've spoken to Counselor Fowle, the Chairman of Public Safety, is this has been going on for over a year, and I believe Mr. Awan was here before us last year, and somehow, because of the changes in the ordinance, he's been waiting, he had been waiting to go before public safety, but for whatever reason, never got sent to public safety. So just to clarify for everybody, he was here before us, and something happened almost a year ago, so there's been a little confusion because of the changes in the ordinance.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the motion, Counselor Darncourt.
Mr. President, when we get to some of the comments that my colleague, Counselor Rodriguez and Officer Roberts Holden just made, I think it would be somewhat important to actually have a map, and we get to, you know, how many cars that you're gonna have there.
At the time, excuse me, at the time that we were supposed to go to public safety, everyone had a package.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if that was discarded, or you have it in the files somewhere. We should have everything in there.
But, you know, unfortunately, I would talk for my colleague, Counselor Nicoso, too, so we knew we went here last year, and we got two, 20.
No, I understand. I mean, I have, if you want, just take a look at it.
Did you pass this in last year?
Yes.
Yes, so it would have died in the legislative session.
Right, it was right in the sun, but...
Okay, so you don't have any of the documents?
Even if we did, it would be moot point.
Okay.
Because the thing is that some of us went here last year.
I was just told, so I was ready for any of that to be brought up here.
Well, just in protection to the council itself, that was the time when we were changing the ordinance, and there was some confusion. I think you were even there at a couple of meetings when we were discussing that. I think the clerk was even there at one of the meetings when this was all going on. Unfortunately, that's how, unfortunately, you got hung up in that little mix. I'm sure it'll be worked out, there's no doubt about it. So, you know, if everyone's set, then, you know, I'll just move for, you know, taking the votes on.
I just want to say a few things, Mr. President.
You want to finish on the motion?
Yeah, if we got to what I was saying, like I said, I'm not questioning whether or not you passed him last year.
Uh-huh.
But the thing that I would like you to understand is that, I mean, obviously, Counselor Nicoso and myself, we went here, and this is a new session.
Right.
So I think it would be wise, if you do have access to this information, to just send it to us. You can send it to us via email, or if you have, I don't know, like, hard copy of it, you can just give it to us. Because in one public safety, I think my colleague, Winfow, would be more than happy to actually take a look at, you know, the layout in regard to what you're gonna do. I mean, this is kind of like, very easy to do in regard to what you want. Thank you, Mr. President.
So to really do it, I think we can do, can we just take items number one, two, three collectively, and send them to public safety?
We have a hearing on each one, though.
To open up the public hearing.
On each one? Okay, so on this particular one here, the motion's been made and seconded, we're gonna send item number two to public safety. All in favor of that? Opposed? That's gonna go to public safety. Item number three.
Petition of Eddie Awan, DBA, A3 Motor Works for Motor Vehicle Mechanical Repair License located at 287 North Montello Street, Unit 3, in City Clerk's Office, October 31, 2018. Assigned for, period assigned for November 26, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. All necessary paperwork is on file, and the Fire Department has no objections.
Time having arrived, the hearing has been opened on this particular item. Anybody here in favor of, which is Mr. Anawan? Anyone else here that wants to speak in favor of, please come forward. Seeing none, that part of the hearing's closed. Anybody here that's in opposition, please come forward and state your name to the clerk. Seeing none, that part of the hearing's closed. Councillors, and again, need a motion to?
Move to public safety.
Motion's been made and seconded, send item number three to public safety. All in favor? Opposed? Item number three will go to public safety as well. Number four.
Petition of Eddie Awan, DBA, A4 Automotive for Motor Vehicle Mechanical Repair License located at 287 North Montello Street, Unit 4, in City Clerk's Office, October 31, 2018. Hearing is signed for November 26, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. All necessary paperwork is on file, and the Fire Department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open on this particular item. Anybody here in favor of? Mr. Anawan?
Anyone?
Anyone else here in favor? Please come forward and state your name to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition? Seeing none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Counselor Ellery?
Move to send this to public safety.
Second, motion been made and seconded on the motion, Counselor Azak.
On the motion, I would just like to make a comment. We're going to find ourselves in the same situation, where December's right around the corner. Is there any way that we can?
The legislative session doesn't die.
It doesn't.
No, the legislative session doesn't die.
So even if the committees are the same until the next year, the same chair and everything?
Right. The only thing you'll have difference is your calendar in December is a little messy because of the way the holiday falls, and you actually don't have a council meeting for 2019 until January 14th. So until the new, I mean, I remain president until that point in time. So we want to try to wrap it up, I think, by the end of December, by that last meeting after Christmas.
I didn't want the same thing to happen again, what happened with this business.
We'll get it wrapped up somehow. Just on the motion.
Just a point of information for my colleagues, especially in public safety, I'd be looking at 6:00 p.m. on the 17th of December, if that is acceptable to Attorney Resnick. And so everyone will kind of have it in their calendar, if that's all right, and Mr. Awan will?
The next night at 6 o'clock, on the 18th.
We always look forward to that, counsel.
Well, 17th would be finance possible, I mean, depending where, what I see.
Depending upon what you decide.
But you could do it, you're gonna do it at 6:00 p.m. anyways.
Yeah, we do it at 6:00 o'clock, and then depending upon what you do, Mr. President, you'll be here at 17.
6:00 p.m. here, and then we went, right, okay, right. So motion was made and seconded, again, on the motion, Counselor Darncourt.
The motion, Mr. President, I mean, given the amount of time this gentleman has been waiting to actually get his license, I'm so happy to see that my colleague, Counselor Fowle, you know, feel that the 17th would be a great day, because I truly would like to see this be done before the end of this year.
Exactly.
So I think as quickly as we can act on this, it would be beneficial, not just to this gentleman, but also to the people of Brockton, which I believe his business will provide some excellent service. So I think so far, Counselor Fowle already mentioned that the 17th, I hope it will work for all of us on that committee, so.
I'm sure it will work for all, and as long as you have a quorum, you just continue forward anyways, for whatever reason, but it'll work for everybody.
The junior member all takes us out for a party after that meeting, by the way.
Well, you know, the president will pay for it, right? Just kidding.
Yeah, the president will pay for it. Motion was made and seconded, counsel on the motion?
Motion, just for logistics, if the individual is gonna be requested as a stip, what Mr. Fowle had said about workers' comp insurance and liability insurance and coverages, he should know that before that date, so he can generate that through the certificate of insurance through his insurance agent.
Exactly, okay.
That would be through the ward council, but just from a time mechanism, if that's gonna be the case, he would need a little time to get that stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would, on the motion, I would request that the ward council work with Mr. Anawan, and even with the Counselor Fowle, and make sure it all comes together for him, because he's been waiting, and we piece it together, okay? That's it? All in favor? Opposed, it goes to the Public Safety Subcommittee dated for December 17, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Report of the Audit Committee for its meeting November 7, 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of November 19, 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Fire Chief, requesting that the City Council authorize a total appropriation of $400,000 from Fire Department Personal Services, non-overtime, to Fire Department overtime, in order to maintain all companies for the remainder of fiscal 2019.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Fire Chief, requesting that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditures of a donation of $500 from Ann Bridge Foundation to City of Brockton Fire Department. The donations will be used to help defray the cost of public safety.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Police Chief, requesting authorization to expend grant monies in the amount of $22,035 related to the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research, Highway Safety Division, fiscal 2019, Sustained Traffic Enforcement Program, STEP Grant.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have an order that the City Council accepts and approves a tax increment exemption agreement between the City and South Shore Property Management, LLC, of Torrey Street, Unit 3, of Brockton, Mass, relative to the market rate housing project proposed for 47 West Elm Street, in City Council, November 13, 2018. Ready to refer to Stand Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll, call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darncourt?
Yes.
Ian Ari?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nicoso?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven of the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
President, make a motion reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
Motion's been made for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
An appropriation of the total grant in the amount of $680,516 from U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs, Fiscal 18, Strategies for Police Innovation Grant, to City of Brockton Police Department, Fiscal 18, Strategies for Police Innovations Grant Fund. This is a multi-year award with four annual budgets of $243,920, $211,832, $207,782, and $17,432, applying respectively, beginning in 2018. In City Council, November 13, 2018, ready to refer to Stand Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll, call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darncourt?
Yes.
Ian Ari?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nicoso?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven of the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Order that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditures of a donation in the amount of $500 from Ann Bridge Foundation to City of Brockton Fire Department.
Mr. President.
Counselor Cruz.
Momentarily, I'm gonna make a motion on number 20 to act on the suspension of the rules, and the chief is here tonight. Rather than make him come out in two weeks or whenever we have finance, why don't we take this, make a motion, we take this on the suspension of the rules?
Motion's been made and seconded, that we're gonna take this particular order under the suspension of the rules. All in favor of that? Opposed?
If he has questions, I know the chief is here.
If anyone does have any questions? Seeing none? By adoption, by roll, call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darncourt?
Yes.
Ian Ari?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven of the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An order that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditures of total grant funds in the amount of $22,035 from Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Office of Grants and Research Highway Safety Division, fiscal 2019.
President, I would move to take that on the suspension of the rules.
Motion's been made and seconded, that we take this particular item under the suspend the rules and act on it this evening. All in favor? Opposed, we're gonna suspend the rules and act on this. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darncourt?
Yes.
Ian Ari?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nicoso?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven of the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Total appropriation of $400,000 from Fire Department Personal Services, non-overtime, to Fire Department overtime.
Mr. President, make a motion to take this on the suspension of the rules and act
Mr. President, make a motion, take this under suspension of the rules and act this evening.
Motion's been made and seconded, that we suspend the rules and act on this one this evening. All in favor of that? Opposed? The chief is here. If anyone has any questions in regards to that, anything you want to say, chief?
This is an estimate of what a plan I will need for the rest of the fiscal year. Some factors that could change, the weather being one of them. Snowstorms tend to boost up my overtime a little bit. But we made an estimate that this, this should get us through. Another change that is something called the Brave Act was just enacted. It allows my, and I have 10 firefighters that are in the military reserves. At this point, or up until this point, they were allowed 17 tours for their military leave. The Brave Act has changed that to 40. So as you can see, it went from 17 to 40. That's a lot of shifts that I'm gonna most likely have to cover with overtime, so those factors, I have about eight or nine retirements coming in January. The mayor is going to allow me to hire and replace those positions. However, the hiring process, the training, it does take quite a while. They probably won't be ready to go on the trucks until early summer.
Thank you, chief. Counsel Rodriguez, on the...
Mr. President, I just have a quick question for you. Is the federal government going to do anything in terms of helping the fire departments with some reimbursement to cover the...
Not that I know of, Counselor.
One of those unfunded mandates, I guess.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Any other Counsel Fowle?
Just to clarify, though, I believe that applies to police and fire, and it might be other city employees, correct? Correct. So, and it's not a local option, so it is the least we can do for our veterans, but I suspect there'll be other budgetary implications. Thank you.
Anyone else with any questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Derricourt?
Yes.
Ian Ari?
Yes.
Fowle?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Bonahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven of the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
President, move for reconsideration.
Motion's been made and seconded for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Thank you, Counselors.
He's a new Counselor tonight, yeah.
Resolve...
I mean, you could do it when you're preparing.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Resolve to invite the Mass Development TDI fellow to inform the City Council as a result of the Summer Beer Garden Project known as Prova and any future plans for other such activities.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Resolve to invite the Executive Director of the Brockton Retirement Board to inform the City Council as to changes in policies established under her administration.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
All items on the agenda are available in their entirety for review in the City Clerk's office for all interested parties.
And I believe items number 21 and 22, I think, were resolved from Counsel Borogad, so I'm not being rude, but don't, you may not find them on the next agenda because I'm not gonna make an agenda just for those two items, okay? So it may be the next agenda in December, just so you know that, okay? I do want to, there is one thing I do want to get somewhat clear is because we haven't brought back Aquaria. And I had them, and when I say had them, I had Aaron from the Audit's Office try to trace back to me to just what we did do. And, you know, at one point, they were present at the War Memorial Building, and there were some questions and concerns and other things. And then there was a motion that we would hold everything to a certain point. And then we went to the Little Theater and they showed up one night because they were just having coffee and tea around the corner, and they wanted to say hello, which was okay. But I think we never really got back to doing anything with them, and then I was out for the month. And I think, at the end, I believe it was Counsel Sullivan had moved because we wanted to get some information in regards to the contract that the mayor had signed, if I'm not mistaken.
Counsel Fowle, and I requested that. We did get some information from the city solicitor's office, which I disagree with, but it might be wise...
And that's where it's at.
...with our, our own attorney on that response before we have those gentlemen come before.
Well, and I think that's just how you finished it off, is that Counsel, I'm sorry, Attorney Resnick to work with the city solicitor to convey to the City Council. And I don't, you know, remember getting any information pertaining to it either. So I think we need to find out where we're at, what you want to do, and I would probably just, you know, we'll leave it off December, somebody can take it back up in January, or just refile it again, you know what I'm saying, whatever you want to do. This little list that I keep is, I keep it just as a precedent to things that, and as far as I'm concerned, I go like this when I'm done, because that's my, my work as president, but...
I agree with you, Mr. President. I don't know if I'm having a senior moment. I am almost 49, but didn't, didn't we get something when, didn't Solicitor's Office give us some googly, googly opinion?
I can't remember.
Yeah, I think what happened is that the Solicitor issued a rather pointed communication that he, what he thought, he, he thought that what we were trying to do is gather information so that our Legislative Council would pick it apart, and that was not the intent at all. What we wanted to know is, on what did you rely to determine that a valid amendment was made to the original Water Services Agreement without council action? So that is still very much up in the air. And I would say, Mr. President, that if our, if our Legislative Council runs into problems with, with the Law Department sharing that information, you know, we fund the Law Department. I think we're asking a perfectly valid question because it has broad implications across all of city government. I mean, if you can do it with one contract, what's to say you couldn't do it with others? So I mean, I think we have to nail that down, is, was there a valid amendment and who, who authorized it? If there wasn't, then we're back to the original contract, and I might say that if they haven't been providing the number of gallons, they owe us the money. Period.
Yeah, and we, and we did leave it at that, it was my last comment that night at the Little Theater. I think it was, it was the meeting right when I left at the end of September, when they did come in that night, that we would do something in November. And then I was out for October, so it just more or less sat. So I'm just looking to see where we go to do something for the remainder of this year, or we just...
I, I kind of agree with you, since the legislative session doesn't end, and to give them, and to give Legislative Council time, I would suggest we put it on in maybe mid-January.
Okay. So we'll still do the research that needs to be, that needs to be done, and then we can go from that point and put it at some point in January. Okay, we'll follow through on that. Counsel Nacastro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding the letter we all received from the city solicitor, there was a statement in there that said, if you'd like to see my, my underlying opinion, let me know. You know, in other words, the opinion on which he based directing the mayor to sign this contract, whatever it may be. So I've twice written to the city solicitor and said, oh, you said we could have it if we asked you for it, so could you send it to me?